Let's call this meeting the special meeting to order on October 2, 2024. Our work is at standing. We have a low talking.
I'm here.
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 Here. May I, this time, someone make a motion to approve the agenda?
Mayor, I made the motion to approve the agenda with the amendment to add a second public comment after Roman numeral four in the meeting before the jury.
Support. House Governor Bellman?
Yes.
Ingle?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. We do ask that you come up, that you state your name and put a clerk, and that you also keep your comments to three minutes or less, please. The podium image right here. Over here, yes, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Randy Noel, and I am currently the president of Rotary Club Cadillac. Our club donated more than $800,000 over the years to the downtown area projects, including restaurants and more. In 2017, our club held its annual auction. It the goal of donating funds raised to the Trailhead Project, understanding that those funds would be part of the management of Michigan Trust Fund Grand Act. The auction awarded $30,000 to the Trailhead Project. The auction received donations to support this cause from 400-plus Cadillac area donors who receive the Trailhead schematics as they are depicted today on display on the auction winning project they were supporting. Today, I think I speak for many in our clubs when I say we are anxiously awaiting completion of this Trailhead project for years later. We are proud that our contribution at that time helped this project to give the 30% local match that helped the city secure $365,000 trust fund grant.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Martin Bogert. I'm also in the Rotary Club Cadillac. I'm also a avid biker. I would like to explain who is the asset support for this Trailhead project. This is an important investment in our future. It's a beautiful plan to attract users of all kinds to this proud jewel, northern end of 90-mile White Pine Trail. This trail is one of the top 100 trails in the United States according to National Consortium of Rail Trails. I'm also member of Rotary Club. I proposed to chair the 2017 auction that raised funds for this trail here. Then in 2019, as president of the club, I launched the first White Pine annual White Pine ride to continue raising funds for this valuable resource. In the first two years, this event has raised $20,000. This year's ride loaned a lot of bikers from 30 different communities all around Michigan. And so, the ride has demonstrated how important it is to have a trailhead. We had a couple of guys from Ipsland who came up, spent the night, the hotels spent their money, took off, got lost. Total loss, couldn't find their way to the White Pine Trail. We hear this all the time. Where's the White Pine Trail? People come to downtown and can't find it. Bike trails have huge value. A number of studies establish that rail trails are hugely popular, community resource, significant economic and tourism power. Michigan has 2,700 miles of trails. White Pine is one of them. We're squandering this resource above the top of Trailhead. Every other community enjoying this trail has more than Cadillac's gravel parking lot and outhouse at East Horn Florida. There's one example, as Illinois did a study of that trail. It wrapped in a trail from Tarras City to South Falls, 100,000 people, one year. We go a little bit into the 90-year history of this trail. This trail is a blessing for so many people, providing a place for recreation and safety. There's no better time to improve this resource than we come together as a community to invest in our future. A future that will mark Cadillac as the northern gateway to one of the most beautiful rail trails in Michigan. Oh, and about the funding, I understand there's a gag. Again, a lot has changed since 2017. I believe that if the funds are available and it do not result in additional taxes on our citizens, it would be foolish not to invest in our future together in the work of construction for this present time. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Jerry here. I sit down here. It is one of the important events here. Roy Cadillac. It's nice to see you all again. Nice to see you through the talks on the White Pine Trail and to see what it means to our communities. And having that driver ride on the White Pine Trail. They have driven, they've all been here. Appreciate the fact that we're really improving the area just to support the council and everybody that's vowed to do the White Pine Trail. We're all with you.
Good afternoon. I'm Jerry Lance. I was on the committee that year we auctioned our, did our auction for the White Pine Trail. And we had $18,000 cash, the major plus in donations, which I had to kind of get out of here. Every year, when the auction comes up, they ask me what it's all about to define that we are part of the White Pine Trail. So I'm glad we're here today to figure out what we're going to do. I think it's really important for our community. It will bring a lot of people to town. It will bring our retail, right, so any retail deal up. I think the restaurants can get here, so I think it's really important for us to talk about it and figure it out all. Thank you.
My name is Jerry Adams. I'm from 110 Vine Street in the city of downtown. And I'm also supportive of the Trailhead. I'll leave the logistics of it designed and all that so forth to you, but just a few comments of the two minutes. The White Pine Trail is more than just recreation. The Trailhead represents key element to the overall development of Cadillac's project. While the recreation and health benefits of the trail and city and area residents are extremely important, movement of the trail into downtown Cadillac, the Trailhead, carries with it an economic side that I believe will hold you also. For example, retail purchasing. Surveys and studies indicate that trails promote an increase in the purchase of hard goods such as bikes, bike accessories, backpacks, clothing, et cetera. Many of these purchases occur at or near well-established trailheads. Cadillac retailers, including those in the core downtown, are equipped to provide hard goods for area residents and guests. The success of all the businesses such as our downtown bike shop will buy tax revenue for the city. Another tax concern is the absence of employment and wages for area revenue. Restaurants and pubs. It's a known fact that users of trails, particularly of trailheads, commonly treat the nearby restaurants and pubs as a hedge up to the riding experience. Movement of the Trailhead to the downtown wood position, number of restaurants and pubs very close proximity to bikers both entering as well as exiting the downtown Trailhead location. Developer investment interest. It is a known fact that developers looking to invest in communities such as Cadillac are influenced by the level and types of public facilities located therein. Communities possessing a vibrant range of recreational, cultural, and educational amenities are known to attract developers willing to invest in those municipalities, thus generating new tax dollars, employment, and features such as new housing. And this may really be affirmed simply by asking some of the folks that over the last years have developed in the downtown Cadillac. Tourism and lodging. Tourism is one of Cadillac's important and longstanding economic interests. As with other areas in Michigan, Cadillac is gaining a reputation as having a high-quality system of light cable trails. This is attracting tourists who go throughout the state and country, thus benefiting lodging facilities, restaurants, pubs, and a variety of retail outlets. I have an actual example of this. John Wallace and I, not too long ago, were having lunch at the Apple Forty-Six Cafe. We were sitting on the upside of the terrace area. I had a lunch with a couple of walkers with their bikes, looking for a place to secure them. And I could shoot that they were expensive bikes.
Jerry, if you have your comments for us, would you please wrap up your comments for us? Your three minutes are done.
My three minutes are done? Okay, I'll wrap it up. Anyways, they were from Maryland, okay? Coming to this municipality because they had heard so much about the White Pine Trail and we're staying in Cadillac, lodging here, and so forth. Also attracting young professionals, I won't go into it. But specifically, I have experience, a long time ago, working with the Shoreline Trail, the Grand Avenue, the Collin Trail, as well as the Montague Trail. And I can assure you that the long-term economic givebacks of those systems have been realized over and over in that area. That's right.
Good evening, good whole evening. My name is Eric Baker. I'm also Sunset Lake. First, I want to make it clear that I'm a lifetime cyclist, a lifetime resident of this community, incredibly proud of it, proud of what you do, and I'm proud of the improvements that you've made in the downtown area. I think it's Cadillac very much in the right direction. Our trust in finding a family that has ridden for hundreds of thousands of miles or tens of thousands of miles in this area in my family. So I speak in experience as a cyclist. I also speak in experience as a career project designer, developer, engineer, and in some way or form being responsible for close to $1 billion in construction projects in my career. So I'm very familiar with project estimating, budgeting, bid package development, bidding, construction management. In my time, I've seen a few projects go over budget. Had a few 10% to 20% cost overrun projects and never thought. I've never seen a project that's over budget by nearly 100% for almost twice as intended costs. Typically, that's for two reasons. Either half hazard bidding or poor timing of bidding. A few things that I'd like to raise that I'd like you to just consider. The reasons provided for the overrun seem to imply that this is COVID-related. Grant was back to June of 2018, long before COVID. Grant language that I reviewed this afternoon had three provisions in particular that concerned me. Number one, the project period is defined as June of 2018 through June of 2020. Has the city received explicit permission from the state to extend the project period? Very clear that any cost overruns are responsibility of the city. This is a big contractual commitment in the absence of a solid bid. So with several hundred thousand dollars of exposure, you're required to go forward with this project. I think that should be discussed. Third provision that I'm concerned with that says all costs occurred after the project period, so after June of 2020 are theoretically the responsibility of the city. So does that mean no grant funding is there? So we've seen the whole amount. I'm very supportive of the White Pine Trail. I contribute to it, I sponsor it, I use it. It's an incredible asset to our community, and it's changed the flow of traffic in our area. And I'm very supportive of that. I'm also supportive of Trailhead. I simply question spending three-quarters of a million dollars at this location for very little incremental addition to what a cyclist needs. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jerry, 604 Alpro. I'm also in support of the Trailhead. And I've been very supportive of the Trailhead project since the start of myself years ago. It took me a whole day, all recorded. It's the Trailhead that ran back over here as opposed to on the side of the road. As a biker, you can go walk or take you to Sand Lake all the time. I can tell you, you will be in right there. I walk from my house downtown almost every single day because it has sidewalk by the side of the house. It's a very small sidewalk. There's not much space. There is no way we can accommodate bikers and walkers, even in White Pine. Frankly, biking it would have taken us to the road or closer to the lake. There's no way by the side of the house you can accommodate much space to have people walk and ride. Other thing I'm concerned right now is bikers blocking the traffic. They are now putting up going country traffic and having to cross the road right where there's a green to the parking lots. Traffic will not be looking the opposite direction. No bikers are supposed to be crossing into the parking lot, Trailhead. I am very supportive of Trailhead, and I don't think it makes any sense to help. I just don't think it makes any sense.
Hello, my name is, excuse me, I'm Nate Davis-Palbert. I'm vice chair of the Northern Chapter of the Non-Plural Volunteer Group, Friends of the White Pine, but I'm from Big Rapids. Saying Cadillac is a great northern Michigan recreational town with all your great amenities is another thing. As we all know, the 92-mile White Pine Trail is one of the most valued amenities. And while there are about 15 communities located along this top 100 rails to trails in the nation, you have the great distinction of being only one of two towns where you are a terminus. However, the terminus is not well-defined, as you know. The E44 Road Trailhead is a gravel parking area with a bed toilet, yet two miles from your downtown. And if I'm a visitor and think there's got to be something better ahead, I'm going to be disappointed because I won't find that something better of a Trailhead. Lots of time, energy, and money has been spent by many people in this community on the development of a badly needed and close Trailhead in downtown. You're at a critical point of moving forward or delaying the significant new amenity to your waterfront in downtown. Please don't let it slip away. Let me give you a few reasons why. As you may know, the trail is totally paved from Big Rapids to Cadillac. However, the 30 miles from Big Rapids south to Sand Lake is not. The Friends Group, working in partnership with the DNR, is working hard to get those 30 miles paved as soon as we can and making profits in spite of the pandemic. Just this week, a culvert is being replaced south of Big Rapids. Unfortunately, there are two more culverts that need to be replaced close by. But the good news is that it is currently being, those culverts are being engineered and designed, and hopefully they will be replaced next year. We did receive $3 million, I'm not sure if we would accept people aware of that, from the legislature at the end of 2018 to help complete the paving of the trail. But that would only do about 10 miles, including engineering and the infrastructure repairs. However, we're working with some major foundations and businesses to raise additional funds to complete the paving of the trail. We envision a day when this 92-mile hard surface trail will be the venue for multiple-sized running and biking events along the entire trail. Two years ago, Michigan started a Pure Michigan Trail Town Initiative, and Reed City did earlier this year. Thank you. So, again, Reed City was designated. Our hope is that Cadillac, Big Rapids, Cedar Springs, and Rockville will lie for that designation, so all five communities can be part of that. So please continue to move the development of this credible regional asset forward by authorizing the construction of a beautiful and functional Trailhead in downtown Cadillac. Thank you for your time.
I'm supposed to sit through all the road. I ride that trail often, walk the trail often. I used to walk and look behind the location where that's supposed to be the parking lot right now. I saw it's useful, but it's still underused like many sort of days. Could be part of the park, part of the Cadillac comments. Most of this Trailhead is being parked like. Do we need to gap trail here in the sidewalk? I don't know, but rules, and I don't know how the whole rules work. There's certainly a nice bike trail on the street for that kind of course of the years ago, with the most dangerous parts of the road you like. How towards the icing parts you're with to come to the light. I just didn't mean that. What's a 50,000 or 70,000? It's ridiculously expensive, and I agree with Eric, and I have no idea what it's be. I would never accept that now. So I don't blame you, but we need problem solving. And what can we do with the money that Rotary has donated and get this done? Problem solving. I don't want to drag the lead of the state to the force. And it's council, I don't, somebody's got to figure out how to solve the problem. We're waiting for everybody wants it to happen. So, thank you.
I'm pretty much done saying anything, but just a few more thoughts like that. I think if we can create that we can Trailhead. But I think being like getting a little royally put that on the trailer, maybe maybe we can calm it down a little bit. Maybe put some little cool, maybe we can get it a little bit quiet. Trail, when you're on the lane, you're like, it's dangerous. There's something there that are people you ride, you know, build a need to be by. Walker, bikers, not any people I go.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close all the comments and we'll move to our discussion. So I'm going to turn it over to Marcus. Oh, I have others. There's a lot to listen to. Okay, so before we do that, we need to approve the consent agenda. And today, we do have minutes from the regular reschedule meeting on September 21st, along with the minutes from our closed session on September 21st. I'll make a vote here.
Support.
Welcome, I'm Ingle.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
All of us?
Yes.
Here for? Yes, motion carries. One second. Okay, now we'll go to the city manager to sort your conclusions.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council for making this opportunity this afternoon. They have a special meaning to continue our discussion regarding the pending Trailhead Cadillac comments project. And I'm going to provide some brief remarks now, and then going to, I think, to our city engineer, Patty Calvert, who can do that. And then Patty will put it to Ollie Howard, our planner, to, uh, when she's done with the opening of the trail.
Just as part of my brief introductory remarks, summer of 2018 was when the city crew, council actually entered into a brand-new new Michigan cover of natural resources for our project. And then at that point, the DNR subsequently authorized the city to be working on our final design package. At that time, the city was finishing up with our market, as we're all currently today, and specific conditional funding to cover all of our full estimated local match costs that not yet been identified. The market project did finish in the spring of 2019 due to several things, including an ongoing contractual strike. The timing to solicit for vengeance not as best I had at that time. And guidance from engineering was for us to wait until the winter, the spring of 2020 before we would officially send out our package for consideration. However, at that point, COVID-19 hit, plus we also experienced the change in staff within the DNR, all of which caused delays, additional delays, and a lot of the ones that we already were dealing with. We regrouped in the late summer and provided plans to the state for their final approval. Ultimately, we did receive six bids. The costs were significantly higher than what was originally estimated. I apologize, everybody, for this. The costs were significantly higher than what we originally estimated in part due to the time that went by, but also a part due to changes that remained with respect to what we put out for bid, what we were originally original. As an example of that, and I can hand you up our engineer, we'll get into greater detail, but as an example of that, one of the higher construction costs is based upon a total reconstruction of the parking lot versus natural reconstruction of the parking lot. And you'll see some neighbors, she gets into some technical specifications of what came in and what we're looking to bring up today. Also, just as a aside, the city is seeing higher construction costs on other projects as well, such as with respect to our recent Chestnut Street construction. So, pretty much at this time, I'm going to be taking this over to Owen, who will be summarizing and explaining here these technical components of the project, including an alternative plan, followed by Owen, who will be presenting it on the financial for publics. Also, I want to make counsel there and the public. We did reach out to the state of Michigan over time, and recently as well, with respect to the great extension. We have already received an extension on the project, and since this was caused a week ago, we've also received indication from the state of Michigan that they are reviewing and bringing us another extension on the project based in this year, till the year 21, which is a big thing, without any penalties as well. So Patty, at this point, I don't know where Patty is. If you please kind of walk everyone through the project along with the earlier projects, but also specific plans of the band. And you'll maybe talk about the post-bid data that will be coming out by the end of the year. That would be very good. Mayor, who comes on healing, will get forms of consensus. And we'll get the city council to choose next question to discuss. That'll help us stand for, for this fair, because maybe the second, the third one, you'll remember where we put that so good and every council facility to action together. Patty? So Patty?
Alright, good evening, everyone. Michael, can you hear me? I'm now tampering here, I don't know if I'm not loud enough, okay? Um, so, uh, I am, as Marcus said, I'm an engineering, I've worked there for thirty-one years, I just work for Abda. Um, I work now right the old time, such a building, I'm working with us, uh, so very familiar, I come to Cadillac almost twenty years ago. And I ride, I ride from like Cadillac, I have an open path, I ride the trail. Um, so I do trail with my bike in town, and it's hard for, like, it's hard for, I have to work, so I feel that does make it a trailhead lot. Um, I, I love the passion I hear from everybody, when they go concerts and stuff, I love their services, I mean, that's important, you know, to grow, to grow. So, we did a trial on the project, and I went through a detail of it first, uh, we took the side decisions, and I know that there was, um, letters and stuff coming to the city, so I did leave them, so I helped to address everybody's concerns and comments that they brought up. And then afterward, if I describe it, I, I do have some, that's Dr. Stapp's mentions, and how to consolidate, I love it, I have some ideas for that too. Um, we didn't know when we decided this right, what did we put in? Yes, we got it in there in Aspen, it was lower than the bids, um, that's true. The grant application, when it was much similar to the problem, as Marcus moved into, uh, we weren't going to read that before we left, I'm going to explain why we went to that period of time, okay? And then you'll take me as a question again.
Are you all ready to go, Alex?
Okay. We can hear, we can hear, let it out. It's okay. So, um, the first plan sheet we have up here is the first plan sheet of the project, we actually, it's, this is south street here. This is the overhead of the grand trailhead. And so everyone knows, if you get off the trailhead, they're not going to tell you, no, they're a girl. It's like, there's, you know, you might be looking at them on camera, but I think it's important to extend it all, and, um, we need to have some signing, we need some sacred crosses, absolutely, and evidence, and everything that. So, the trail here, we initially put a store school there, so that's a little weird, and that is stores four, we can't do that, that is more real estate, okay? So the trail goes more around that, and we had our group, now I don't think we'll sign that, and, uh, we had to, um, to, like, this whole sidewalk computer, here in the design, we could look at, and we keep that concrete sidewalk, that is a great sidewalk. The problem is, it makes the living to meet the grant requirements. We have to go with the concrete, we can match it in multiple places, it makes sense to the contractors, actually, more than the numbers we crushed to remove and replace that section of the sidewalk, okay? So we did look at that, and we tried to use anything that's already functional, by replacing, right, and it's not really, okay? Uh, that's what we had, we had, I know there's a lot, you know, talking, it's not quite right there, right? There are some sketch areas, and you have road or tram going by, I personally, that's a personal thing, I like to manage trail upside the trail. Uh, everybody has some kind of opinions, and there's some trails, uh, to do like trail. So once it appears to be out of, to the fence, that's the point, right? And ignoring the, now there is a pitch point, we discussed that with DNR. It's like, we're not going to be able to go, you know, what we can care, so we were allowed a variance to go to even one of that one spot, the rest of it as well, with the DNR requires, there's, there's, there's. Just beyond that, there is an ADA crossing, 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 like, very, and that is not compliant, so you have to have a plan replacement. So there's also the location where the sidewalk goes right below the walkway, goes up on the lake. We will build signs here saying, this does result in bikes in this way, except it's a concern to, uh, bikes, well, there was a map, so. This is that, also have a library, and that will be, um, special emphasis paper marketing, so safe across, and we will give this to, right? And I have a hand for my house outside, just, uh. Then, coming up, so there's those, um, two hundred and, oh, it's three here, twenty eight here, doesn't have, yeah, right, so take it off, take the Lake Street part of the line, okay? So that's the first section of the job, is getting the trail in the town for a perfect. So once you get to the Lake Street parking lot, I don't know if anybody ever drives through there, but there's, uh, it seems like there's a speed bump, but it's not. It's, um, the storm during the months of the late, and it has eased. So we worked with, um, we worked with state agencies, uh, that is, it was there in this project, so fifteen thousand dollars of this project cost, so they moved down from that, um, four to eight, with gap in, um, I think, drop the code of the color goal. So we thought it was better to get it in this, than in the other. So, one part, um, this is the ADA crossing here, across the street, into the park. So that will have no kind of story to give the marketing, uh, it doesn't need to, uh, uh, um, we wanted a grant entrance, right? And we have the arch over here, it's in her, in the plaza, we originally designed something very similar to that, um, but that has an alternate, so left tower, like, those, because the last project will go in that spot instead. Sort of great thing, if you see that, if you're coming down the trail, you're going to see that, you're in no destination, you're nowhere to go. So that was the situation. So in the grant application, you know, if anybody that's written grants in for, you have to add, and then it is to, uh, to get select, and you can have a growing order of project, and then the brand, by the way, you can work, so. Working with John Wallace, so I have tons of people going together during the same application, we assisted a little bit, and the way it's, everything, okay? And it's, so different than the others are putting it, we put it, they, they score high on the ADA technical tables, um, we have, you know, what I said, you have, right, bottle, no, or, uh, trailer. I actually know, they went all the way down to Tuscan, it's like, white, no water bottle. It's like, how a place would have been better, that, right, come up the other head. So, so you have, you know, with the technical tables, you have mass gas, that has multiple sides, so we have, that's in the city, polish numbers, and people know what they can do, and we can have the man showing you downtown, a lot of the, it's, it's her. You know, we love the train cars, um, we have a bike repair station, that is the number one thing that trail riders want. They want bike repair stations, what do you do if you're trail riding, well, you have the trail, there's somebody else's car. So that, that's what it helps, with the, we discussed that with Scott Coles, too, who was, uh, the word of West Michigan Trail and Great Bay Council. He goes, oh my gosh, if you take anything out of this, you don't take that out. We also have some white lockers, something different, right? Thought that was some of the grant application for DNR, or doing it, they're like, oh, we haven't done any white lockers, it's false. We had crisis from flyers, contractor obviously, we meant this, but we had crisis, I know, and we don't want white locker, basically, uh, you know, that's something to discuss a little bit. What we did also is turn over the other exit of, of the parking lot, like, it's supposed to be for the triads, and, um, less just, less traffic, moving back and forth, so, you know, across here. There are now, there are, so that was very important for safety, um, yeah, and, uh, this exit there. The shape, these three exits stays pretty much the same, we're able to adjust, and so we had empty spots actually, that's right. We need the north parking lot to be a little bit smaller, and our missing spots, so what we do to get at these spots, is avoid using, yeah, so. If you shelter, I mean, what can you do, you go to kind of park, right? I mean, what a nice feature, you know, come here, and, uh, here to, oh, and red lunch, and all that, right? It was a nice feature, we put it in, um, we love the ramp, but it's not our required, right, we don't deserve ramp, we're just, we're just. Oh, we have these electrical outlets in there, you know, so when you get somewhere, your phone dies, and another nice fit, the trailhead, wonderful, you can bring, take the right there. Um, we put in ductile light poles, um, we wanted a naturally look, plaza, and we look at all those banners, and the other guests, it's, you know, right, that's such a beautiful, lovely plaza. Uh, so we added it up there, and see, my, my, I thought we solved it in time, I put up with some things, and we just, up there, and, uh, going across a little bit. And, um, as Marcus mentioned, originally in the grants, our plan was not to go into the parking lot, we're all going to decide that, but we got into, like, this area made from green, and gray is going out. We had recovered the ADA, we had enough space between the two, because I can actually be out, because I like this one. So, um, that's why the whole parking lot had been reconstructed, and our, and our bits, the contractors, right, they're, they're close on it, so that we can have ADA, like, us, whole public plaza area. And we have a good lot of green, this is bad, we're waiting for it right here, um, there was a word in progress, so we can, so a lot of the work was out, just like, now, right, okay? Alright, um. So, like we have done on Lake Street, with the, um, safety signs, if you walk across the motorator, we're going to, in a back, to say, car. I have a major, so many people slow down, right, on their cross, they're, they know they're coming into areas of, like, they're not trying to cross it, and this would be, too, it wasn't the same way. You know, safety is issue for everybody, and there's a cross, so. Alright. Oh, the other thing that has, um, the sidewalk, and you cross the road and tracks, so I did a little bit of this repair for that, and, uh, so this one, it's real, well, they can't allow us to replace those sidewalks, that's their challenge, okay? So that's what we have for what was in our design package for the contractors, um, let's get a little water here. So as Marcus mentioned, we had, um, three different people in the DNR, so we pick up, switch things back to DNR, there's somebody who would come in, um, so we worked through that, and finally got a report to go to bid, right? While getting to this project was not bad, it had a lot of concrete work, very little underground work. Contractors can do a lot of this stuff, as I mentioned, working late in the season, early in the spring, they were able to, um, just be in the spring, there's the planting in the spring, it's nice, so. Uh, it really wasn't a horrible time to do work, I could survey contractors around the area, hey, are you guys working for this mess? And they're all like, need fall work, even in the beginning of this last year, they were like, need fall work. So it's like, well, we've got an audience owner, why not get some pricing, right? Um, as Marcus said, if I get bids coming in on this, um, most of our projects we have free, so at least we have, right, I probably have first, um, the one contract with one woman, and do a whole job this season. You want to be done, you're part winner, you have the timing, you have the proof, you have the equipment. So that's what they were hearing before we went to bid, so I know some people have some questions about the, uh, got some other nice things, with COVID, it's taking fourteen to sixteen weeks to get light poles right now. Crazy amount of time, and it pulls, this would allow the contractor to have the job, start in the fall, finish in the spring, you can be now, so. Alright, so we shot them all, right? So we put together this beautiful grant application we wanted, not everyone wins this year, certainly not the first time we're on grant application. So we knew we had to get a project, they saw the value of the project, let's put everything we put in there, see where prices come in, right? Prices obviously came in high, and I'm so glad we're in this meeting, so we can talk about it. Um, as I mentioned before, I could see a lot of the concerns that came in from people who say, we're down, and, you know, page, help people out, just important, um, comes requesting, especially if you can study just a little bit. So it needs one over here, and a part for this. So we kind of regrouped, reshaped the project, we tried to identify elements, and then take away from the character of it, I mean, this is the kind of comments, we've all lost, and this is the last piece of it. It's like, we don't want to go too skinny, and, like, women's camp school, ladies in campus, here in the town. Um, we wanted to keep all the items that were required, it's, right, and like that, and his grant money, and then we're back in spur of mind, right? And then they asked, like, what items could we add later, and every once in a while, someone will go, hey, uh, first of all, personalized buildings, so we said, what, I do, you know, that type of thing. Um, so what can we pull out, that we add, like, in this stage, we need it on the road? So, I mean, most of the now, a lot of things, again, awkward, that, you know, as Dr. Stapp said, a little problem solving here, so. I love to color, so this is, okay, so something we looked at, parking lot, right, so, right? Since our, uh, grant, we had to do the reconstruction of parking lot, that's a huge cost, you know, right? Putting in a new thirty, thirty-five year parking lot, that's going to last that long, it's a lot of money, okay? So, we, um, looked at, and said, well, getting here to the grade itself here, to be, like, they're getting the grass, right? So if you look at the grass there, and, uh, so, I can save all of this, right? So, I save all of this, right, and I just fill the overlay that, you can repaint, right? And we don't have any old paper mowers coming through, it's much less expensive crops, and then, and then we still have a beautiful library, parking lot, we still have thirteen years of light, and it's, um, right, it's, yeah, in good shape. So we are very, uh, employee and staff, this is DNR, so we took that, we're able to, floodwater, we get it to the rain there. So we thought that might be a really good, you know, I'd say, quite a, right? Now, up in your road, that's, okay, save about sixteen, sixteen thousand dollars, so six here, sixteen, okay? So the lights, I mentioned the ductile lights, so we could still get the ductile lights here, right? We can put in a partial light, similar to what we would have been, so that the big, uh, parking light over here, and have saved us a lot, maybe we don't have it right over here, like, for us. So, we're able to have light, we want safety in the parking lot, and that is, um, so my suggestion is, it's good, it's good, the commercial light here, and we all have our lights out there, right? So they could save another fifteen thousand dollars, you know, we designed a, like, super, just, they have been there. Um, if you shelter itself, as I mentioned, um, that was not a requirement of the grant, any, any shelter, it could be all there, right? Or, yeah, you know, we got, similar to the sales, or, you know, you can put some sales on, see, you have some shade over the container, so we can do something like that, a lot of work, obviously. So that was my idea there, if you shelter the parking, it's, it's thirty-five thousand dollars. So we do have some trees. So, um, there are trees, have to be grooved, you know, I know that, I know that, so, there are trees, on the same three, there are trees, and that would save about four thousand dollars. We have storage lockers, I mean, so it's where top of the white, you actually put your white in, so people that have four thousand, five thousand dollar bikes, they might not be as comfortable, you know, by that, professional, you know, and special about this, right? So, like lockers, I don't think so, so they stay up, um, they're kind of, they can use that, including to the grant, so it's not prepared, in the grant, um, we have, oh, and I'm, uh, twelve thousand dollars, we have, I'm not sure, we have three thousand dollars, so we can fix that, right? We have, we have, like, a circle of, it's next right here, and you got, it's, it's like this place, um, but, you know, that thing is, you know. And you got, this is like this place, but you know, that thing is in the, right? And then as I mentioned earlier, the storm store, this over there, the main street yard, so replacing the M and S storm store, so that we can correct color when we're not put, um, that would give me some, this has been 20,000 dollars. So if my math is correct, I'm at 164,000 dollars, I'm just through it. It doesn't change the character of the, this is just more of the lawn. Right here, we have their beige, so we have the grass. Um, and people still have to, they never heard 881, it's a transparency. Um, so it, and it mattered what the sidewalk itself meant. So it's still be kind of big, still come into the trailhead, still be able to go to the park, spaces, and you still got, um, you can manage up to the sidewalk, repairs, press across those, who else comes? So, um, to make those changes, we talked with the D and R, we discussed this, said that we were having a discussion with the city council, and we had remarks that if prices came in higher than we were looking for, um, you know, we think that's an issue of course that though, and bike and road trackers, they're good, it's really good. Um, but they're already there, they're, they're actually showing a trust that you're capable of, a lot of people have that in the city. Um, so there's kind of their, so we'll come to you guys for a question, Mr.. No, I'm curious, okay?
Thank you. So, uh, I was asked to answer the, you know, important question of, of can we afford the project at this level, or even at any level? So I'm gonna try and do that, it's kind of a multifaceted, because I want to give you some background on where we are and what we've experienced even over the last few months, um, that will help, I think, uh, give some more clarity to that answer. So the bottom line really is, the city, uh, after the recently ended fiscal year, uh, the, the year that ended June 30th, uh, will have about 46% projected in fund balance. So, uh, that calculates out to about 3.3 million. Uh, our policy says we need to maintain 15% fund downs, uh, which calculates out to about, uh, just over a million dollars, a million and 73,000 dollars, based on our current budgeted expenditures. Uh, so, really, the simple math on that is, we have about three times what our policy says, so additional about 2.2 million dollars. Uh, historically, the only thing that we really have tapped those, uh, those reserves for is capital, one-time capital projects. So other kinds of, of recreation projects, uh, projects down here in the, in the, in the comments, uh, helping with the purchase of a tow truck, uh, things like that, that are one-time, not ongoing operational type, uh, revenues. These revenues have not been used to, uh, pay for additional staff, or, or things that would build into our, our core budget. Uh, and so, uh, again, about 2.2 million dollars in reserves, in excess of what our policy says, uh, that, that we, uh, we should maintain, just as a, an important cash flow, uh, reserve. I want to highlight what Connie said a little bit about, uh, the concern with cost overflows. Uh, again, I think she made it pretty clear that it's not necessarily, um, it's not bad estimating at the time necessarily, uh, you know, the, the, the cost of a brand-new parking lot versus the cost of half a parking lot and maintaining, uh, or fixing the rest of the, of the project, and that's a big difference. And again, uh, there is a cost to that, because instead of a 30-year brand-new parking lot then, we would have about a 15-year, um, repaired parking lot. So again, um, those are priority types of discussions that we can, we can talk about as we move forward. Uh, the second thing I want to highlight is that we're not proposing, again, to use uh, ongoing, uh, local property tax-type revenues to fund this project. Uh, this won't impact tax rates, uh, this won't impact costs of services, uh, things like that. Uh, instead, again, these are one-time sources of unplanned, unbudgeted revenues that we've received, that have fed into the city's reserves, and helped put us in the, the position, I think uniquely, uh, than anywhere we've been in the past, uh, to fund a project, uh, and even a, a whole space like you had a lot of, um, and so, uh, primarily, this is from, uh, back in 2014, when the personal property tax reform was passed, um, the state promised to reverse that, uh, and they've done so, and then some, uh, which has been quite a surprise, frankly. Uh, so last year, that was to the tune of 367,000 dollars that we received in addition to what we had budgeted for, based on the, the calculations from the state. So, um, that, that's something that helped feed into the fund balance for this year. Um, those additional funds should continue, but begin to taper off as the final implementation of the reform takes place. Uh, so we will continue to propose, at least, to not budget for those, so that we don't build a, an operating budget, uh, that, that ends up being structurally imbalanced, because we knew that the paper you have to be reserved would come. Instead, uh, we'll, we'll continue to, to adjust and be able to take those additional dollars and invest it in capital-type projects. Now, uh, obviously, the 2.2 million dollars in, in extra reserves, um, those are funds, um, that can really be used for any purpose. Those are funds that have to be used for a purpose like this, uh, and, you know, it, it again, is, is clearly a priority-type, uh, discussion. Uh, but when we talk about ability to pay and leveraging, uh, grant dollars, uh, we've always maintained reserves that we can, uh, we can take advantage of in order to leverage grant dollars, when we have the funds, uh, to do so in this case, whether it be at a lower level, uh, or whether it be at the, the full bill, based on the bids that we receive. Uh, again, our fiscal year '20 budget, uh, or, or, uh, results of operations from fiscal year that ended in June, uh, we anticipate approximately 300,000 dollars in positive results, uh, to feed additional funds into our, into our fund balance. Uh, so again, I think that's all good news. Again, there's been, or additionally, there's been some developments related to what's happened since, uh, since July 1 in the current fiscal year. Uh, we have received a significant amount already of CARES Act dollars. Uh, primarily, that was to, uh, provide reimbursement for some costs that we already incurred, and in fact, those costs were incurred in the prior year, uh, but we received those funds, uh, just recently, in the last couple of weeks, to the tune of about 230,000 dollars so far. Again, unbudgeted, unplanned expenditures, uh, and so that was good news, uh, again, for the city. We talked, we adopted the budget, uh, and developed our COVID-19 response plan financially. Uh, we talked about, uh, state shared revenue, and how we lost just over 100,000 dollars uh, in, in that revenue source, uh, as a projection initially from the state, uh, in May. Uh, since that time, uh, they've made up just over 18,000 of that, uh, through the CARES Act funding. So we're well below now, uh, 100,000 dollars that, that revenue source, according to current projections, uh, is gonna go down. Additional projections that continue to kind of flow out, uh, look at a, a House Fiscal Agency, Senate Fiscal Agency, I think, when they're looking at the budget, uh, those revenues have gotten better, the projections. So, uh, the impacts of the, of the pandemic, of the economy, uh, so far, uh, we're in good, we're in good condition, and, and so I wanted to make sure that we pointed that out. You know, really, I think the, the key, the key takeaway, uh, from my perspective, financially at least, is we're well positioned, and I think uniquely so, as compared to where we've been in the past, uh, to, to make this investment in our community. Again, from a priority level, uh, does that need to be 300,000? Can it be something less than that? Um, but, you know, it's firmly my belief that we're, we're well positioned without impacting, um, our future, our stability to, to fund a project like this at this time.
Thank you, Owen, thank you, Connie. I think just to summarize your chat block from my conversation. Given the, the rundown that Connie went through, that identifies about 160,000, 160,000 potential savings, uh, that would obviously dramatically reduce the, uh, outlay of local funds, regardless of, of their source, uh, local funds that we currently have, and the sort of dead stuff of, of, if we're going to keep moving this down the road, depending for engineering to basically establish, sort of, that, to the impacts, get that out for all of the respective bidders, they would then, politicians members essentially get that to us, update the figures, we would then present that back to the city council for consideration, and the timing that we were looking at, with respect to all of that, would be to bring some of that to you. Uh, I want to send some numbers, 16, whatever that third Monday is in November, there is no meaning getting in the month because of the election. So the next can be the, the third Monday of the month. Uh, conservatively, you know, we, we want to make sure that as we look at, we care, uh, some general consensus with the city council, in terms of, of that, together. We've heard a lot of information today, uh, you know, if we look at the project, we're almost provided to the school in terms of the restrictions versus the trailhead piece. Uh, Connie, it's certainly to be able to, of course, our, our, discussing, how, how provide parts of this are, are especially flexible and work a lot in terms of, uh, the maybe, uh, for the end, uh, for the end of the statement. We're not, we're not different, do another, because we, I just, in this, so.
We have started in the special, Owen, if someone could hit on the concern that Lori talked about, when this project was first talked about, that the trailhead came up, like, and why it was necessary to take a doggy. It's missing. Just so everyone knows that.
Why do we, why do the route?
There were two major reasons for the route. Uh, the main reason was to achieve the grant. Like neck directly to the lakeside park, we got points for it being directly connected to another walkway, we got points for it connected to fishing and boating, not the two things. So that, that was the big piece. We're also, this, also for our police partner, who sub-ten principles, going to improve a situation in the lakeside park, and to prevent, uh, the route, the library, the scene is less safe, in terms of, uh, couldn't have people on that pathway. So it was a safety issue, and it was a, we get the grant this year, which is positive change in the route.
Okay, so if, uh, if we have to start one at a time, go ahead.
And so it's great. Uh, first of all, I think everybody here tonight is in favor of the trailhead. I, I think we all say, that would be a gem to our community, and we want that project to happen. Saying that, I think we want to do it responsibly, uh, from a point of view of the money. Uh, my, my personal first concern, before I get into some of the questions, uh, that I want to do, is we went from a maximum of 80,000 dollar commitment of city funds to approximately 321,000, uh, 321,000 dollars of city funds. That's four times what we, or at least I, as the public thought we were going to spend from our tax money, and that, to me, just blew my mind. That, that threw me for a loop. Uh, so absolutely problem-solving to figure that out. I'm also always very cautious, just because money is in the fog, doesn't mean we spend it rightfully. We have so many citizens talking about road problems, talking about storm rings that are collapsing, and have just been marked by different things, that I think Owen's comment on the discussion of priorities, of what we use funds for, is critical. Uh, third is the fact that, uh, and we've talked about it, and I'm so happy that the state is willing to extend the opportunity for us to use this grant money, that I think we have the responsibility to vet out how much the state will let us do. I, I believe, uh, Lori talked about it, Tom Smith talked about it, Eric Baker talked about it. We have a concern of how to get into the trailhead, getting people in safely. Uh, I don't know this, I'm gonna say this is my personal concern. I think the risks of going behind the library, if it's cleared out, uh, as a possible path, is gonna be used during the daytime, and I don't know that the safety risks are there. I would want to know, John, did we talk to the D and R about the fact you're still getting to the trailhead? People are still going to have the access to the park for fishing, they're still gonna have the access to the park for picnicking, which, Kenny, I guess this is again, one of my personal questions, do we need a picnic area as extensive? I would agree with getting rid of the shelter. How much do we really need at the trailhead? Because we have this wonderful park with the fountain, with numerous picnic tables, and we have picnic tables right by the lowbore pavilion, all within a stone's throw. Point being is, we want a beautiful trailhead, but we don't need the Rolls Royce. As long as it's connected to everything else, we really should be physically responsible on how we spend that money. Uh, when I looked at the, the bids, by going along the lake, we're tearing up, there was uh, money in there for the sprinkler system, taking out trees. To me, it looked like a lot of infrastructure costs that we wouldn't necessarily have, clearing up the pathway behind the niater. Again, that's my own personal thoughts. I don't know what effect that would have on the cost, but I'm thinking a blacktop stretch that we're not taking out infrastructure, the sidewalk, sprinkler system, trees, might then help us budgetize. So my biggest concern is what Tom Smith raised. I want to see the trailhead for our community, but I want a return for our citizens. I don't think spending 620,000 dollars is gonna give us a return. I'm thinking of put our heads together and do it for substantially less, and be responsible. And my only concern about the rebid, uh, package, the contractors, is making sure we feel comfortable with what's being sent back to the contractors before it is, so we don't have to go back and forth four or five times. Uh, and possibly, if it can, tonight's so important, because we need public input. Uh, one of the things for me to happen, and this is just means reaching out to bikers and saying, what do you want, a trailhead? Most bikers said, yes, we want an accident trailhead, we want it, it's great. But not at 620,000 dollars. You don't have to spend 620 for people to stage, where they're staging, and we can have amenities that are beautiful, but we don't want to expend that type of public dollar. So I'd really like this, put our heads together. Thank you, Connie, for looking at what you've done so far, but those are some of the questions, John, I have, of, get this extension, and go to the D and R and say, what if we do this other route? Because they can still get to the park, they're still connected. Might be even argument, if this is part of our park system, trailhead, coming across behind, they're still connecting the parkway, and we can still have the crossway, building a crossway that won't have the traffic back to the lakeside. Those are my general thoughts. I really want it to happen, what I want it to be done at this.
I guess, you know, I thought Connie did a great job. I had no, I wasn't involved in the original planning, so I know a lot of preconceptions of what the plan is gonna be, but what the budget is, but people, but I looked at the 265,000 dollar D and R grant, and I heard what Owen was saying, and the process that the grant went through, and I know, said tonight, you know, we put together the plan we need to make sure we got the grant, um, and now we're reevaluating what we need to do to keep it at a minimum level. So if we're down from our 327,000 dollars, the city is on the hook, we're down to 160,000 dollars. You talk about getting bang for your buck, or building community wealth, we're now spending 160,000 dollars on a 420,000 dollar improvement. Um, you know, that's, uh, I mean, that's a lot, you know, I, I hate to send that money back to Lansing, I hate to jeopardize the project, you know, but I have a whole lot of years to, to talk about it. But, but I think that's very important, that, you know, we get this done, and you can, and you look at, you know, the numbers we're doing. Again, I'm gonna say, again, 100, spending 160,000 dollars for a 420,000 dollar improvement to a downtown park system. to a downtown park system, you know, absolutely seems like a great business. And when we talk about, you know, Owen, a matter of priorities and what we might need to actually money that we have. You know, we vote on a budget, we do our capital improvements. This way, if my trail is back, you know, three years, four years, maybe longer, the making. It does seem like this is the next thing up. We can always fix more streets, we can always fix more drains again. And we should do that, we should prioritize that. And we should do that at the same time that we make other, not just make the deal. So, you know, thank you, Connie, that's something that, you know, your plan to cut $160,000 from what was $320,000 that happened across to the city, I think was amazing. And, you know, I will be in favor of making sure of that ever anybody else is ready. I don't have the same concerns about the trail. You know, the way, I only, speaking from my own experience, the way me and my family use the trail, having more than a nice spot. I like crossing the road right there at the trailhead as opposed to, as opposed to walking along the path by the library and crossing. You know, I think we had to move it from one side of the library to the other side of the library to get the grant, which is my understanding. And I don't know if you guys want the trail.
Yeah, it was originally going behind the.
And so now you're suggesting that maybe we should still look at way, look at. I mean, I hope the way, the way I use the trail, it affects me and affects my family. So I don't share the same concerns, but I certainly don't have any objection to the alternative. I think we got a great project, I think we got a great, right deal. I think we did some good plots. I'm not going to send me out on the stages. Maybe it's time to underscore that the rest of the decker lights would put a bike ride around it, so that's the park.
I know you probably couldn't hear what Ryan just said, but he thinks that they did a great job so far. And so he really liked it, he drove once and home.
Good thoughts, Ryan, I'm going to the trail.
Yeah, speak up on two of them.
If you have thoughts, I'm going to the trail, she goes behind the library. I wouldn't go behind the one.
Oh, it's your go behind, how do you? That you're going along there. Yeah, we all want to.
So I came down here to the design. So I came down, we did the walkthrough, and there was section that is kind of tight. We were there with the meal chair and with me with my cane. And there was plenty of room for us. And, you know, you don't have multiple bikes in this area coming this way and going both ways along with walkers. I've seen where there are people riding and people walking. And it's just such a natural flow that I don't see that as being a habit. You know, cyclists aren't going to just come following to pedestrians and vice versa. So that's the two most blind of all users of pathways are desperate for cyclists. We've got that. I think that behind the library takes you in in just a really kind of unsightly place. And whereas if you come along, when we walked, if we started in the parking lot and we walked to where the trailhead comes in, you ought to just do that and then take the walk behind the library. And what is going to be, give the wild factor to folks who are cyclists from Bay Radards or from Radards? Are they going to all of a sudden be funneled into this, the back of Family Fair? And then the back of the library and then into the community? Or they come out of the woods, cross the road, here's our jewel of our lane and our beautiful commons area? What is giving, making more inviting to people? Well, so I'm not in favor of putting the trail back in like you're coming into this industrial backs and buildings place. I think we should, as we invite people into the community, they should come in and see the best of it, not come in. That's my part about that. Any questions? Oh yeah, connecting to walkway. The tearing down rate. I'm wondering if, right now, I know that like the plane cycle has done great business in the pandemic. You can't buy a bike, they solve everything. And as anything comes in, they're being solved again. So I wonder if we could get like a sponsor like the plane to sponsor something like a repair station and put their plaque up there and say, hey, if you need more than you can do here, this is our address. Cut the bucks.
Yeah, they did a lot for us with the transportation. And there's also a local contract that I want to help with that. So they now have something to help us in subsidies with those up there. Some people are waiting, we want to help them.
Yes, so and that's what happens. I think that if we just keep putting this off, you know, with a pared down project that we can add on later, I think that's a great idea. I think if we just table this till the grant is about to run out next time, I think we're missing an opportunity. It's already delayed, this whole, you know, this college project didn't come from our heads. This came from a lot of community input. There were multiple meetings we met in the, at the cinema. We met at the resort, we met at various places. People put in their two cents, people came back to add their other two cents, and then more people came in and added their two bids. And this project came out of the collective thinking of our community. And it was the commons area, it was improving the pavilion area and improving the trailhead. This business, this notion that we are one of the top one hundred trails. I know we all want to do this. And if you have, you have to invest in order to grow. You just do. And if we want to keep having projects coming in that want to build housing or that want to, our manufacturers that want to locate perhaps their executive centers here because we are this jewel at the trailhead of the White Pine Trail, I think that we would be really foolish to not do it right and not do it well. And I think this, you know, trimming down is still doing it wrong. But I think, yeah, that's, that's.
Well, I have some comments and I have a couple of questions. First of all, I want to say thank you to everyone who took the time to come out and provide the input for this work session tonight. When this was brought before the council and we realized that we had so many questions, not only was it important for us to have the opportunity to have this work session, but it was an opportunity to have all of you here with us for this session. You know, I, one of the questions that I had, you know, I had while we were talking was about the bids and the fact that you can take, go back out to those that bid on the project and ask them to rebid. What I would like to understand is if we get those bids back and they are not happy with them, would we have the ability to completely open up the bidding process again with all of these?
Yes, ma'am. So as I understand it, Connie, what she would do is essentially let the vendor contribute that, but to fill it out, the vendor's there. It's a legitimate force to us to pay. They would have an opportunity to get, read their information and submit the numbers for us, for us to accept. If at any one time the city council was a picture. If at any one time the city council doesn't want them to receive and we put in the review, and we get, you know, we jet all the bids and had, so out for him, a big area, this is what it comes. But you know, certainly we have something to do. Good to hear.
I would also like to understand, you know, there's obviously shared with us how different things could affect the cost of the project by doing some things. But I would like to understand from the DNR grant perspective, what effect would we have on the cost of the project if we were not behind the back of the library? But I would also like to understand the effect of, what if we had on the points that we would give to be able to obtain that grant? And would it keep us from getting the grant, keeping the grant if we're behind the back?
So, Penny, those are great questions. Good afternoon to the city that have that information. The city, and perhaps just to re-travel a little bit, the city did plug twice for the DNR grant. The first time, the original project, as our engineer described, didn't have the extension piece going back behind the library and the canopy area, essentially adjacent to the railroad railroad. The grant is not accepted, or our application is not accepted. The guidance that we received basically gave us the suggestions as to how to improve our local. One of the other reasons for that as well was to increase our local action introductions. So I believe the first grant was like an 80/20 grant. The second one was the 70/30. Regardless of any of that, by the time we got the bids back, it's not a good fit, it is, is a misrepresentation. But nevertheless, it's a pretty valid point for explaining the second time, right, that is moving the gap between the process. So that's something that we would need to request from the union whether or not they would be willing to allow us to move the extension back to the original location. They may say that's, they may say, oh, I don't know the answer to that. But likewise, and so just, you know, thinking of the timing involved and still trying to get, you know, a package available for also to the citizens at the level of the 60th, maybe a little bit. The next likely meeting in which we could have some additional feedback that could be on your regular meeting schedule for October 19th. So I don't know if that's feasible or not, to see if we can see kind of response back. But we'll certainly try. And if you know the perspective, you guys says, here's where we're at. And then we'll go from there.
And then I would like to see, to see the, yeah, when the bids do come back, I would like an opportunity for us to have a work session on this again with all of us, you guys presenting it in very much the same way to us so that everybody has an opportunity to ask questions.
So just looking at the timing. You know, assuming you have the doors unlocked, like in terms of being able to get the minutes of that for state. And we can, you know, touch that with you guys about school. Your next meeting will be, we have the third Monday of November. It might be a little chilly in the heat of the day. But we'll still have the science town, perhaps, assuming that the business party, the lead, big information, we got the social resources. So we have the subject, this is for a root here. Otherwise, we.
And then also to Robert's work. I absolutely 100% believe that we cannot let these $300,000 go back to the state. Because if we let go of this project, then we're going to be on the radar as some, you know, as a community who handed dollars back. And it's going to make it very difficult for us to bear the parents' future. So I think that we have to continue working together and working towards that to make this project happen. So, and I don't want to miss the opportunity to say thank you to the Rollarians that are here this evening. You know, it's your vision and support, and I don't say our vision and support because I'm a Rollarian too. But, you know, you helped us create all of this and I just don't want that to go unnoticed. And finally, I will say that if we do get to the point where the trail is back up here, I have no doubt that our garden club, our up on ours people, that this community will come together, so maybe they'll really help. So I say that without asking them, but I just have seen that our community does together. So if we're able to get it back there and still get that DNR grant, then I believe our community will come by this week and make sure that. To it this time, I'm going to go ahead and open the floor for a second public comment after everything you've heard tonight. Selvi.
Eric Baker, thank you for the opportunity to make a public comment. First of all, thank you for the session and thank you for the really healthy dialogue and deliberation. I'd like to echo Mayor Philkin said, this is too good an opportunity to pass up. So I think this is about, as Dr. Smith says, about problem solving, not about opposing and fighting and killing and all of that. I just would really like to see a few changes made. The effort that the city made to seek a timeline extension, I think, is solid gold. Because now timing was our friend, it's not our enemy. And I think the result of the last round of bidding is a result of timing your enemy in the project. So let's use this opportunity to, to re-scope if to the extent we can. I can't stress enough, as a lifetime cycle, tens of thousands of miles, the proposed route is not safe. I would be scared to death of my young kids 20 years ago coming into that area. If you're almost, there's opposite reason for why you suggested it is so beautiful. Its heads are on a swivel and now you've got several screech crossings and the traffic closing the same. Walking and cycling, this is going to be the most solidated and dressed traffic area for walkers and cyclists. It's right, right near the old arena and the apartments and across from the library. And when you get slow speeds with higher speeds, really bad things can happen. And at that point, acting the trail down, I think you're also asking for problems. All of those, those two concerns are alleviated by going behind the library to extend the DNR route. I believe you have leverage with the DNR now. But the grant has been established, the importance of this as a trailhead, the importance of the White Pine Trail to Michigan. I think you have leverage to at least explore a reroute. I guarantee it will be safer and still have a walking area by the way. And it's, it's going to be beautiful, trust me. The last point is, as Connie offers some outstanding value engineering options to sort of prioritize, I think that's right. Or what I would really like to see you do as opposed to eliminating the picnic pavilion is do the subterranean work and get it ready for pavilion. So that would be footers and foundations, I think, would not add very much cost to that scope. And then let local fundraising bring that structure up in the months following the grant opening. Because I think those dollars will be found. But I think if you do that work ahead of time, it will save a lot of work in the second place. Thank you very much.
Here's Mark Boggerway. And I appreciate the constructive dialogue on like some things we saw earlier this week in our country. We could actually have a good conversation together because there's a lot of good points being made tonight. I think I speak for the local group that we really want to see this project happen. I'm so glad to hear that everybody agrees. I think it's a great idea to try to pare back some of this. And certainly when we get down to, I think it's $160,000 of city funds, I think it's very realistic about money to spend considering what you have reserved. I will also just speak briefly, I also like 10,000. And I probably have done 2,000 on this trail this year. And I've also ridden many trails around Michigan. I would not agree that it's not safe to cross without people. You have to pay for three crossings without the railroad to go behind. Two crossings really, one here and then across on the other if you go back. Two crossings really, one here and then across the other, if you go half. If you take the trail, Lelandon Trail from Traverse City to Sutton's Bay, you're going to cross a road, highway, I think it's six or seven times. The people, bikers, know what they have to do. Bikers share the trail. I ride the trail all the time, this trail near Rockford, it is packed with people. Walkers, stakers, bikers, community. People know how to share the trail. A 10-foot wide trail can be very safe, can be shared between pedestrians and bikers, and the light front is a very beautiful entry to get. So I'm not totally against the idea of re-looking at what goes on, but whether to go back there, but in my opinion, it can be done safely in both places, and through this whole.
Okay, seeing no one else post public comment, and I also don't want to let this easy end without saying a huge thank you to Marcus and Owen and to Connie for putting this together and doing such an impeccable job of addressing all of the concerns that you either heard in person, on the phone, or by a letter in the last couple of weeks. So thank you. And with that, I would join the meeting.